Hi, everybody. Welcome back to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today I am joined by Colin and Julie. Hi, guys.
Hello, everybody.
You say hi, Julie.
Hello.
Hi.
Most on mute.
Glad you're here today. I hope everyone is coming in right now and having a fantastic day and ready for that day to get a whole lot better. We're going to share with you some really fun, exciting new information that you may not know yet. Some of it you guys probably definitely don't know yet. There are some things that you might not know about your good oiling system that it might wow you a little bit today. Our OGs will probably be like, yeah, I've been known that for like five years, but that's okay. We love you and we love that you refer us to your friends and your team. So, welcome. Good to see a bunch of familiar faces here today. I've got some slides. I don't usually do that. I haven't done that in a while. Got some slides to go through and walk through some of this stuff. We got a lot to cover here today. So if you're new here, welcome. We're really excited to have you here. This is really a session that's designed to obviously give you new information, share things that you may not have known, but also for us to work together. Sometimes you just need somebody there with you to hold your hand for a minute, listen to what you have to say. We're here for you to do that today. So go ahead and start putting whatever questions you have in the Q and A. Our chat can get a little crazy, so we want to make sure we don't miss what you need help with today. And I do want to make sure real quick here at the top of the hour, if Genevieve and Sean are here, if you'll just kind of wave at me a little bit, let me know that you're here. I've got you guys down for website reviews today. And in the event that you're not here or you couldn't make it, we will open up that space for others who are present to have that one-on-one help. So without further ado, let's get over here and get started with some slides. All right. Oh, yeah, I always forget to do this when I do slides. Guys, can we turn off our video real quick just to make the slide part of this a little bit nicer for the recording? Thanks. All right, perfect. So, welcome. Again, this is the Get Growing Weekly Work Session. We do this every single Thursday at noon Eastern time. So today we're going to talk about time-saving hacks to grow young living and some live website reviews here today. So first, let's just kind of go over the order of business here. We'll do a training and a live demo. We are also going to announce our rose oil winner. Every year at Aroma Sharing, we give away a bottle of rose oil through a drawing. No purchase necessary. We got a winner today and I'm excited to share with you guys who that is. We're also going to do some member website reviews. This doesn't have to just be a website review, by the way. If you don't have your website made, or you're not even sure what the heck that means, but you just need somebody to help you out with getting started with using your good oiling system, this is a perfect opportunity for you to get that help. So we'll have that Q and A and support here and that'll be throughout. We've got our team here. As you're bringing your questions into the Q and A, those can get answered while you hear my mouth moving. So don't wait to put those in. Go ahead and start bringing your questions to us now. Go ahead and add them to the Q and A. We are here to help you. All right. Now, if you are watching this, future you, hello, on the replay on YouTube and you want to join one of these calls live, you can do that at getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. And if you want one-on-one help on one of these calls, you go to getoiling.com/webstatereview. It'll allow you to pick a spot on an upcoming training. All right. So today we're going to talk about three ways that you can save time growing young living, things that make growing young living and sharing that much faster and easier for you. And we're going to talk about three new hacks with Get Oiling, three new feature changes that are going to make design and productivity a breeze for you. And I'll show you what they look like and how you can repeat them in your own account and your own amazing sites. And then we do have another really exciting updated training announcement to share with you guys. You're just gonna have to wait around to see what that means. All right. So first, let's talk about saving time growing and living. First, we're going to talk about the secret signup shortcut in Get Oiling. We're going to talk about a cheat code for what to say. If you ever wonder what the heck am I supposed to say, we've got a cheat code for you. And we're going to show you how you can share information in a fraction of the time. So let's talk about first, the secret signup shortcut. Maybe just a quick show of hands. How many of you guys know that there is a really quick way to take someone straight to your young living signup link, right? To get their kit and everything. There is a secret link in Get Oiling that makes it super easy for you to go straight there. Handful of you? Okay, but not most. All right. So let's check this out. Did you know we've got a shortcut? We have a signup page hidden inside of Get Oiling. And let's bring that out into the open. So if you have set up, when you set up your good oiling account, you put in your young living member number. All right. So if you've done that and we could do that, it can check this out under the Customize My Site page. That's under the My Site menu. If you've got that in there, now all you have to do is go to yourgetoilingwebsite.com, which is, you know, not actually literally yourgetoilingwebsite.com. It is yourname.com or getoiling.com/the name you picked. But anyway, if you put forward slash start at the end of it, it'll go straight to your young living signup page. Now, how many of you guys think that it's like super easy? Like you're in the VO and you're trying to find a link to share with somebody so that you can maybe sign up a member? Is it easy and straightforward right now to find a link to share to sign someone up? No, it's not, right? Like you have to have your member number and tell them to go to this page and scroll to this place and make sure your number is put in the right place, right? If you aren't sitting next to someone, that can be a recipe for disaster, right? So if we are working with someone maybe on Zoom or over the phone or something like this, this makes your life so much easier. Just go to yourgetoilingwebsiteaddress.com/start and that will take them straight to the Young Living signup page with your member number already entered. Pretty cool, right? Now, by the way, if you are using one of our built-in themes, you can use the Leg Builder links with one of those built-in themes. If you're trying to enroll under a certain account or something like that, you do have the ability to to use one of those to go straight to Young Living as well, which is pretty cool with those numbers already input. All right. So now let's get over to the cheat code for what to say, right? If you ever wonder about what to say when you are going to be speaking with a new prospect, right? Somebody who is interested in natural living, or they say, hey, well, I want to know more about what it is that you do. And you're like, uh, where do I start, right? How do I actually communicate with someone so that I can get the outcome that I want? Did you know we have a ton of pre-written campaigns for prospects and also your new members inside of Get Oiling? Already written, already done for you, already ready to go, ready to share, ready to use. Highly recommend that you apply these campaigns to yourself so that you can actually see what's in them, see what it feels like to get them delivered. And then, of course, if you want to edit them, you have a way to do that. So you want to check these out. You can go over to the Contacts menu. That's the top one in your dashboard. Click Settings and look for Campaigns. And then any of these that you see, we've got new members for multiple markets. We've got new prospects. All kinds of options here, you guys, whether somebody is getting started with a kit or without a kit or in Australia, Canada, Singapore, global, or wherever you want to be sending information to your new member. All right. So they're ready to share right now. Like I mentioned, you can duplicate them. And if I go back here, if you see, there is a little, little double page icon there next to the country or all. That is where you click, you duplicate it, give it a new name, and you can edit it to make it your own. You can then apply your campaign directly to a contact from their contact card. So you go to their contact, right? You look them up or you add them, and then you scroll down to where you see campaigns and there's a button to add. Then you just select the campaign that you want to add to them. So if you've just had a great conversation with someone who is interested in what you do, you can say, I've got, you know, a free guide and a little bit of additional information I'd love to send your way. What's the best email address for you? You add them to your contacts, apply the new prospects campaign to them and you're good to go, right? If you get a new member, somebody has signed up with a kit, without a kit, pick the one that you want. You can actually apply that campaign to them right away. Again, you don't have to know how to edit any of this. You can just use it. Pretty cool, right? You also have the option to attach these to landing pages, to vaults, or to automations. So if you have a member vault, you could put the new member campaign on the vault. So when you sign someone up for or add someone to your members vault in Get Oiling, they can automatically start to receive that drip of emails from that campaign or one that you've edited or created yourself. All right. Third time hack for growing young living tip here, you can share information in a fraction of time with Get Oiling because you can save the emails that you send with the information that you send regularly to reuse and share in less time. And actually, this is email or text. Think about all of the different links that you might want to send or share with people who are your current members or customers and people who might eventually become them. There are so many. And doesn't it take a bunch of time to hunt one down and try to figure it out, right? You can simply go back to your, actually, let me finish what I was saying here before I go forward. You can actually go, you can go into your sent box in your email, copy what you've sent to someone most recently, especially if you know you've sent the same information previously, and put it into what's called a saved reply in Get Oiling. And then you're off to the races. The next time you need to send a message to someone, maybe you're getting a new member started and you have a welcome email. Lots of different options here. So you can find out more about saved replies by going under the Contact Settings menu and going to Saved Replies. We actually have a number of these, and this isn't even all of them, that are ready to go as templates for you. Saved replies are kind of like the unsung hero doing all the work in our system. Like you can use them for blog posts, for texts, for campaigns, for emails. You can use these as a shortcut to repeat or share information that you would be sharing on a regular basis and to provide you a jumping off point or a framework for sending things like monthly newsletters or weekly roundups. If you have a blog or something like that, right? So use the templates that we have for you, or you can make them your own. You can copy and paste, like I mentioned, emails from your sent folder with all of those links. You never have to hunt for a link again. And you can include all of the links that you share frequently. You can have as many of these as you want. They save you a ton of time. Highly, highly recommend. If you have not started using saved replies and Get Oiling, this is one of the best ways, honestly, that you could be using us, is saving your time by taking the information that you share most frequently and putting it into a resource that you can just pop out and send with just a couple of clicks instead of having to hunt down information and type the same thing out the 20th time, right? Pretty cool, huh? All right. Now we're going to get into some really exciting new stuff with the Get Oiling platform. These are some new productivity and design hacks. I'm going to walk through and tell you what these are. And then I'm going to go over and actually show you what this looks like in the Get Oiling system. So first, Greg did a thing. This is so exciting. How many of you have spent what you felt like was just, I don't know, maybe too much time or frustrating amount of time? I'm looking at you Reds, trying to find that one page or that one campaign or that one contact. And you gotta click maybe two or three, four additional things that maybe you don't want to. You just want to go straight. You know what? I logged in. I want to find this person so I can send her a campaign. I don't want to go click Manage and then Search and then Find, right? We now have a search bar feature. Maybe quick show of hands if you've used this already and you're super excited about what this means for how quickly you can get things done. So you can search your entire site, right? So if you want to go straight to a contact, you search their name. If you want to go straight to a page you were editing, the last time you were logged in, you search for that page. You want a campaign, same thing, search for it. This is all here. And you can search your own account for those different assets, whether those be contacts or collateral in your system. We also have a new way, for those of you who have been designing pretty stuff on our site, you can change your button colors now from the button itself. You do not have to go and add a new button that's a different color and try to get it back in the same place. There is a way for you to change your button color really simply and easily. I'm going to show you how that works. And then jump links. This is really cool. And I forget, Colin, Julie, do you guys remember what the actual technical name for this is? I'm not like, I forgot what Greg said it was called.
Anchor text is what it's called.
What's up?
It's called an anchor link.
Thank you, Colin. That's right. Anchor. Yeah. So if you've ever been on a page and you've clicked a link and it's jumped you down to a section further on that page, that's what we're talking about here. And we now have the ability to plug that into your section, your page section editor on our custom pages. So let's hop off and I'm going to show you guys what this looks like. Pretty exciting stuff. All right. So I'm going to come over to, here we go. Okay. So starting off, and I'm logged into our friend Jessica Doman's account right now, because I'm actually going to show you on her Modern Social Mama Sales page, how that jump link works and how the button change, the color change works. Because she's got some really pretty colors and a lot of great stuff on her page. So we are right here inside of Jessica's dashboard. If I wanted to find a, let's say, I want to find a thank you or confirmation page. Here we go. We've got several confirmation pages and it says Custom Page. If I want to open that in a new tab, all I gotta do is click right here. Pretty cool, right? Now, there's another thing you can do. If, let's just say you have something that you do frequently. Maybe you edit something frequently, like your homepage. So here's our home. I can pin this so that anytime I go to search, my homepage is pinned here, right? So we can open that in a new tab. If I need to look up someone here in the Contact Manager, let's look up me. Here we go. If I want to, and just so you guys know, if you want to know how to add a campaign to a contact, search for them and just pop it in right here. Super easy, right? And then come down here to Campaigns, search for the campaign that you want and pop it on, right? And now that person is going to start receiving those campaigns. This is a great thing to do for people you have just had a conversation with, right? If you have been, you know, maybe you've just gotten someone started. They're a new member. You want to add the new member campaign. You can do that here. If you have someone who is a prospect who said, yes, I would love to get some more information, you get their email address. You don't even have to have them sign up on a landing page. You can simply add a campaign to them this way. All right. So that is the search. Pretty cool, right? Let us know in the comments. You can find anything. Pretty cool. Really quick way to get things done. Okay. So the next one, we're going to talk about changing the button colors, right? So this is Modern Social Mama. If you guys don't know about Modern Social Mama yet, this is a course that we partnered, Get Oiling partnered with Young Living Gold, Jessica Doman, to create a course that uses Get Oiling and her social media strategy that has her working three hours a week and signing up one to two new people. Highly recommend you check it out. It's modernsocialmama.com. I made the sales page for Jess and it's got a lot on it, right? Lot of stuff here. I'm going to be showing you here in just a minute what it looks like to have someone jump from the top to right down here at the bottom where we've got a call to action and a value stack. But first, go edit the button. So I'm in the Custom Page Editor right now, and this is the top section of Jess's page. You can typically, what we would have done in the past is we would have to put our cursor where we want it, come over here and insert a button, right? Or add a button from up here with that plus button, if you wanted to get a larger button, right? Well, now, if you like the size of the button, you just want to change the color, all you have to do, you guys, is click it, click Style, and then pick one of these colors that you have set up in your custom colors, right? So you see how quickly I changed that? So I'm going to change it back to lime. I actually like that lime a little better. Pretty cool, right? Let me show you where you can find these colors and change them. This is right over here, Customize Color and Font. That's under My Site, Customize My Site. You click this. It takes you here. Now, we have renamed some of these. We've changed the colors on them for the background and the text and given them names. So those are the names that are going to show up right here in this list. Pretty cool, right? All right. Final thing. If I go over to modernsocialmama.com and let me get back up here to the top and I click I Want In. So somebody's like, you know what? I just watched her webinar. I know that I want this. This is exactly what I need. I want to have them click a button, see the price, see what all they're getting, and then be able to get started. So watch. Oop. Pretty fast, right? And now we can click on the button and purchase her course. How did I do that? This is pretty simple. If we go and actually, for you guys, if you want to see all of this broken down, there's going to be a little, a little red number right up here in your dashboard, if you haven't looked at this yet. But if we click right here, we should talk about putting an icon here, or even if we have, even if we've looked at these things. All right. So you can see what I'm talking about today, right here in the updates. But we have all of this stuff right in here. So just make sure you check out the updates. But real quick, let's show you what this looks like. The link on this button, if I edit the link, it says hashtag breakdown. That's in the URL field. Now, Breakdown is what I named the Value Breakdown section down here on her page. And you can use whatever you want, but this is the section I want them to jump to. And in the Background Settings, all the way down here, there is a section Jump To Name. I called it Breakdown. Call it whatever you want. They're not going to see what that is unless, well, maybe they'll see it like, you know, kind of when you hover on the browser. So don't get too wacky with it. But I've got this breakdown. I hit Done. I go up here. I want to link this button to Breakdown. And just like you would have hashtag lead to have a pop-up or hashtag contact to have your contact form pop up. If we want them to pop down to the place on the page that we're referencing with this button, all you have to do is enter the name that you have given that page section. All right. So once that's saved, you can come over to the page, test it out, and there it is. Pretty cool, right? And that was all of that. Now I am going to go back over to our slides here because I do have just a little bit more information to share with you guys before we get into chatting together and going through our, our website reviews. All right. So quick question. Show of hands, perhaps. How many of you here have Go For Gold? This is a course that we released in late 2019 with Martha Crecci. She had just gone from, from Happy Young Living Customer to Young Living Gold in six months, which is something that usually takes about four to five years, right? Wildly successful. It's got a lot of you guys just using and loving the Get Oiling system. Wanted to share an exciting update for you guys. We have just released with Martha the first week of Go For Gold 2.0. Now, it's going to be very familiar to you in terms of concept, but for those of you who have been through this, you may want to go log in and check it out. We have brand new templates and training for Get Oiling and Canva. I have completely redone the Lead Funnel and given you Canva templates and new page templates in your Get Oiling system to use. So those are there. You can look for the new Go For Gold 2.0 inside, excuse me, there's a new Go For Gold 2.0 class that is inside the Go For Gold Vault. If you're already a Gold For Gold member, you have access to this right now. So go log in and check it out today. And if you don't have Go For Gold and you want to get access to this, you can get $50 off when you go to getoiling.com/goforgold and you use the code NEWMEMBER. All right. So for those of you who don't know, Go For Gold is, this is something that we created with Martha Crecci. She went from Happy Young Living Customer to Gold Leader in six months. And you get to learn the whole approach that she used, including the strategies that I use, right? Get the scripts, the workflows, the templates, everything, right? Taught by me, taught by Martha, including an incredibly supportive and amazing community. Our team is in there. I'm in there. We love you guys. And you know, those of you who are in there, go ahead and let everybody know, right? The course is hosted and co-created by Get Oiling. So it's actually inside of a Get Oiling Vault on the Get Oiling site, on Martha's Get Oiling site, and it is loaded with plug-and-play Get Oiling resources, right? We are the GO, the Go and the Go For Gold. And we love to see all the success stories that have come out of following the modules in this course. I've been putting a lot of work into this recently and I'm really excited to see you guys go in and take advantage, in particular of Module One with all of these updates that I've just made to the funnel. So I hope you guys go check it out. That's getoiling.com/goforgold. Coupon code NEWMEMBER, all one word, gets you $50 off. All right. So drumroll, guys. Now it's time to find out who won the Rose Oil. Pretty. All right. So every single year, we do a Roma Sharing. We do have this drawing. There's a number of ways to enter and this person definitely entered in all of the possible ways. And we're really excited to announce that Courtney Frey won the Rose Oil giveaway. So congratulations, Courtney. We're going to be getting in touch with you to send you your whole bottle, whole full bottle of Young Living Rose Oil. Congratulations. All right. So now we're going to get into some website reviews and Q and A. We can pop our video back on and hang out with you guys. And I am particularly excited to get into these website reviews. There's some cool stuff happening here today. So I'm going to lower hands. And if you guys have questions, it looks like we don't have any questions in the Q and A. I'm kind of impressed. You guys have been hard at work or nobody's had any questions. So if you have any, then definitely, definitely put them over here in the Q and A. Now, let me come find Sean Constant. Are you here? I don't think Genevieve is here. So I'm going to bring you out because you did sign up for a review today. Hello? And you are able to talk.
Hi there. This is Genevieve. Can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
Okay.
Glad you're here today.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me share my website.
Yeah, for sure. So tell me a little bit about what you are hoping to get some feedback on today.
Well, I, I updated my homepage with the information that you guys shared with the Simple Grace Collective and tried to add some offers. And I just want some feedback on if I now have too much on that homepage and how many offers is too many offers. And just kind of, I also, it also links back to my blog and I've put up a lot of categories, but I'm wondering how to organize that a little more efficiently so that people can go from my homepage to those categories.
Okay, perfect. So I immediately saw that you, you definitely have a great, a great theme here in place that you got from the Simple Grace Collective. By the way, you guys, this is something that, you know, if you don't know about these girls, go over to our Partner section on our website. They make some really, really great stuff. And you've done really beautiful work with it, Genevieve. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, so a couple of things. I've read through this and I think that the design that you have in place here is really beautiful. It's calming. It is, I feel like it's really kind of evoking from a visual brand perspective what you're looking for. But the one thing that we're missing is, is who you're speaking to and calling that out in this prime real estate right up here above the fold. So, so what I would say, because what I thought was particularly impressive was when I came over here to your blog, you are actually super clear about who you're talking to.
Okay.
This kind of message needs to be on your homepage. So for instance, if we were to go right here and say, I help this kind of person. So taking this, this, I help high-performance mamas, you know, find vibrant living, graceful aging and a youthful mindset. I would put that up here, right? Okay. I would do that. And then what do you have that helps them find that? Do we want to have them subscribe to, subscribe for updates to the blog? Or do we want to give them a freebie, right? Maybe, oh, you've got that 28 to elevate. I can help you. I can help you get there in 28 days. Click here. Offer 28 to elevate. So you can have a lot of things available on your homepage. It's really about trying to direct their eyes to the most impactful thing that they could do right now. And so it could, you know, again, it could really simply be that you, you use this really powerful message that you've put on your blog. I help high-performance mamas find vibrant living, graceful aging and a youthful mindset. Subscribe for updates so you get all my secrets. Like it could be as simple as that, but we want to have a call to action and a call out to your person right here. Like keep the hello beautiful, put something about, put that message right here with a button for them to take advantage of one of the things that you have. And then put an About section about you a little further down the page, right? Because they're arriving here and it's not that your page isn't about you. I mean, it's literally your name, right? But it needs to be about them, right? The message needs to be about them. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's very helpful. Perfect. So should I have all three offers on this page or should I just pick one?
So I don't think that you have to have, you don't have to narrow the options further down the page. Because of what we really want to do, our greatest opportunity when someone lands on our homepage is milliseconds, right? We have a big opportunity in a couple of milliseconds. And so we want to put the thing that is most impactful for your person right up top, something that's irresistible for them right up top so that you can grab that, grab that lead and keep them, right? Now, if they think that's interesting and they want to keep scrolling, then yeah, we should absolutely have more things that they could take advantage of on this page.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no problem with that at all.
And then down at the bottom where I have Follow Me If You're Curious About, like these are kind of the chunks of blog topics that I have. And I just want to know, how do I? And I, I just want to know, how do I make my blog formatted so that you can click on hiking and get to hiking posts or gluten free, dairy free and get to those posts?
Got you. Yeah, so first I would highly recommend that you maybe turn this image to a button that says blog, right? Read the blog or something like that, or have a call to action or a button that says read the blog. Because it's not really clear that you're talking about your blog right here. And if you want them to follow you, it's not really clear what they need to do to do that, right?
Okay, great.
Yeah, so we need to get clarity on that. And in terms of linking straight to your blog, if we say, let's find, I assume you have a tag for like hiking, for instance, here we go. So if we click hiking, come up here and you can actually see that there is a URL. So there's your url.com/blog-tag and then your tag. So if you wanted to go straight to all blogs with a specific category, all you would have to do is just change out whatever the blog tag is right here and then have that be the URL that you're pointing to. So, you know, so if you wanted to, for instance, have this be, you know, blog topics, you know, here's some of the things I love to blog about. And then have some images, you know, hiking, gluten free dairy, graceful living, Christ centered business. And then have those all link off to that URL with the tag. Then you could do it that way.
Okay, great.
And another thing that you could do, you do know that you can actually have your recent blog posts show up in a section like this, right?
No, I didn't know that.
What? Okay, let me show you real quick. This is one thing that, okay, actually, there's one thing that you do need to do to make it effective. And then I'll, I'll show you what it looks like to get it done. So the first thing that you want to make sure that you do, and you are doing a great job using excerpts, but you want to use a featured image.
Okay.
So very important, use a featured image. And, and what I would do is keep them, because you have a couple of them that do. But I would keep them somewhat similar, right? So let me show you, Jackie is doing this. Right, so you see there's an excerpt here and her images, you know, they're all kind of similar. I would take this a step further and actually make the text on these images larger so that we can say, you know, you know, here's the, you know, home makeover, oily edition or something like that. And, and that's the thing that they see and it's the thing that helps them to click. So I would use Canva and create just a single featured image for your blog and use it as a template for all of your subsequent blog posts that you make. Because what you'll be able to do, and I think that this is something, I think Jessica has this on her site. I'm not 100% sure if she has the most recent blog post feature. She has some specific blog posts there, but it looks very similar to this, right? Where, where it'll say on the blog and then it'll actually have the blog post title. It'll have the image and it'll populate a little, it'll have a button or something to go read that blog post. So let me use my other thing here and log out of. I don't want to like go into your dashboard and show everybody's information. So give me just a quick second and I'm going to show you how you can add this to your page. What do you call your homepage? Do you, do you call it home?
Yes. Page, genevievevealkeev.com, page home.
Yeah, like in custom pages, you call it home. I was, okay, perfect. Perfect, here we go. Okay. So what you would do, if you wanted to just have your most recent blog post show up, is you would add a section here. And then right down here at the bottom, you've got three options. So you can show your most recent blog posts, and this is why you want to have the images. Because it'll actually show the images from your post.
Awesome.
Right, yeah, it'll, it'll show the most recent ones. You also have an option to show this in rows with excerpts instead of, of just, you know, the image with, with the title and a button. And once those populate, you can delete the button and just hyperlink the image. It's totally up to you. But I do like this idea, if, if you're kind of, you know, siloing your content to, to hyperlink the tag and say, you know, if you want to learn more about hiking, if you want to learn more about gluten free, that would be a really cool thing, I think, to put on your, on your homepage as well.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Absolutely. That's such good tips. You guys always give me such good advice.
Happy to help, happy to help. You're doing great work. Good job.
Thank you.
Alright, do you have any other questions?
No, that's it. Now I have a lot to do, so thank you so much.
We look forward to seeing what you do. Take care. Alright, alright, so Marioness, can you show how to add a link to a section on my website? I am going to bring you out to chat real quick so we can be clear on what it is that you're wanting to link. So hello, welcome.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Thank you for taking the last minute.
Absolutely. So tell me what you are wanting to link.
Actually, I'm in the same boat and as the previous caller, so I learned quite a few things just from listening to what you were suggesting to her. So just like you were showing in Jessica's website, which you just showed real quick, there was some images. I would like to add a link, hyperlink from that, from a photo such as the one she had that will bring the person to, let's say, my Facebook group. And I tried it, but the, the actual link was this, was written on the image, above the image. So I couldn't figure out how to do it hidden.
Do you know which, the name of the page? We could actually go straight to that page.
Yeah, let me pull it up. It would be Facebook.
Other page on your Get Oiling site?
Oh, my, it's oilslittleweight.com.
So it's the homepage?
Yes, so this is my homepage right there.
Okay, wonderful.
Going down at the bottom. So I have four, I have these six different squares. So I want to attach to, for example, the one in the middle to my Facebook group.
This one?
No, above the section.
Above, yeah. Okay, perfect.
So for them to join my community. So right there, when I click on the link, the hyperlink to do that, I couldn't really attach it to the picture, which is what I wanted to do, to have the person click on the photo and then have them go to the Facebook group.
Okay, got you. So could you, in our Zoom chat right here, would you share privately, if you want to, the link to that group? And I can, I can paste it in here and show you how to do it.
I can do that. Let me just pull that up real quick.
Sure thing. And I see a question here, Lorraine and anyone else who would like to work one on one on a call like this. It is getoiling.com/websitereview. Thanks Colin. Johnny on the spot here. Yeah, so that's, it is not just, you don't just have to have a website done. You don't have to have something done to, to have help. But if you're just, just getting started and you're using a built in theme and you just, you want to know how to add a contact, it's fine. We're here to help.
No, that's a private group. I don't know.
Okay, perfect. So I've, I've copied it. And so here's what we're going to do. You want to have them click the image and the image is going to be like a button for you, right?
Right.
So there's an insert link button right here. You see that? Alright, so when we click that, we paste, open in new tab. Oh wait, no, this is, that is, that's your homepage. This would be for the Facebook group. You're wanting to link to a Facebook group, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I, I didn't copy that correctly. That's my fault. Copy. There we go, insert. Okay, so this is now clickable. So let's take a look real quick. So I'm going to save it. You have to make sure when you are adding a URL to anything that you hit update. This is something, I make this mistake often, if we don't hit update, it doesn't save that to the image. And then of course, we need to save the page. So now when we go and we, this is beautiful, good job. Now when we come here and click, it does take us off to the Facebook page.
So I tried that and it just didn't do it instead. I don't know why, it just listed it on top of the photo. Maybe it was because I didn't do it straight from, from this section. I clicked on it as if I was reviewing, you know, when you type the information and that's where I did it.
Got you, got you. Yeah, yeah, if you want to add, you know, if you wanted to link, you know, if you wanted to link the text, you would do this the same way. Except you would click the link up here. The images will have their own menu pop up. But for the, for anything text, you just select it and then you could enter that. You just have to make sure as you say insert or update and that will complete the, the process there. So with any of these, so for this one, I think is the truth about candles what you have on this page or is it, is the simple start?
The simple, no, the truth about candles I have in there.
Actually, on this page, our pop up is the simple start step by step.
I have to change everything. I have to review it all.
I see, I see. But what you can do here, if you want to offer this, so you've got the simple start here. There's no problem with repeating an offer like that down here. So if this small steps is the same as simple start, then all you would need to do for the URL here is go lead like this, hashtag lead. And that would make the lead box pop up. So I'm going to insert that, save it and then let's look at it again. So we know your Facebook link works, but now this one will make the pop up come up right away. It's the same one, right? Like this is the simple steps.
I want to go there.
Perfect, yep. And that one's, that one actually takes you, oh, oh. That's not what we want. Let's go ahead and fix that. This right here is actually linked to Canva. So this one actually needs to be linked to your lead box so that it causes the pop up on the page, right? So the simple start to natural living guide is one that's going to be, that you give them right after they opt in. But we, we got to get their information first. So let's make sure. Alright, the simple start PDF that you have, is it, let me see, do you have it downloaded to your site yet? Do you know?
I know, I did it straight to Canva.
Okay, so what you're going to want to do, and, and this is just a pretty, pretty straightforward. And I think this, I think that the Simple Grace girls might have some training on this. But you want to take that Canva link and you want to export it as a PDF file.
To where? See, I, I wasn't sure if I, if I export it to my computer or if I take it through to a Canva document.
Right, so you're going to take the Canva document and you're going to save it to your computer as a PDF. So now you've got a thing that you can open up, you can print out, you can give away email, whatever. Now, the second step, right, so you've downloaded your file, it's a PDF. The second step is anywhere on this page, doesn't matter. You're going to go and I have a PDF from, from Go For Gold. I'm just going to do that right here real quick. So I'm going to go this more rich right here. Okay, I'm going to upload a file. You're going to click and then you're going to go find that PDF that you just downloaded, right? So here is a PDF, the marketing funnel PDF from Go For Gold. So now.
Embedded into my website page.
What, so you're adding it as a file to your website?
Okay.
Yeah, and so, and then all we have to do, like you can just delete this here and pretend like that never happened. But, but what you want to do is now you have it in your files. So under this more rich menu, we've got insert or manage files. Now have, so now, now here's that marketing funnel. If we were to click off that, well, if you click it, it'll add it to wherever on the page. But what you can do here is you grab the URL, because this is actually a shareable link now, right? If I put it in here, you can actually see, this is what I just gave you. So, which that, that was also made in Canva, exported as a PDF. So it's the same thing, basically. You just want to make sure that yours from Simple Grace is the one that you grab here. So upload it and then you want to grab the link for it. And you can do that by inserting it, copying the URL like I just showed you and deleting it. Or if you go to insert and manage files, you can grab the link from here. And depending on what you prefer to do, up to you, you can, you can add this to your campaign so that you're delivering that lead magnet via your campaign. That's definitely something that I recommend. Or you could simply take it and copy and paste that link right here so that people will get that, that download, right? It'll take them to the download after. So let me, let me just show you what that looks like here. We won't keep it this way, obviously, because this is not the thing that you're promising to your people. But, but let's look. So now this pops up the lead form. And once I have, huh, what's going on with that? Something strange.
Our server is usually like accidentally logged out, something goofy, too many windows, so.
I have a lot of windows open, that's true. Okay, so, so basically what will happen, you know, if, if I do this correctly, and this is probably me, is it's going to take me, there we go. So it's going to take me straight over. Here's that guide, right? So your PDF would be here. You just want to upload it to your files, grab the file link, the URL, and then put it right down here where it says enter a URL.
Okay.
Alright. Let's save that, so nothing weird is happening on your page. I hope that helped. And I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming out. Okay, and just a quick thing to add on to that, for those of you guys who are using PDF downloads or really anything that you're giving away in exchange for actually getting a lead, I really recommend using a thank you page or a confirmation page as the place that you're redirecting. And then whatever it is that you're giving away, whether it's on a custom page, PDF, vault, whatever, they get access to it in their email, right? You don't want to get bad email addresses. Sometimes people do this on purpose, but most of the time it's total accident. And you want, the whole reason people opt themselves in to get stuff on your site is for them to then be nurtured automatically by the emails that follow. And for you to see in your system that here's someone who's interested in what I have to say and for you to be able to follow up. And if you don't have the right contact information, you can't follow up. So we prevent that potential failure by going to a thank you page. And a thank you page can just be a custom page that has a picture of you. And actually, again, for those of you who are in Go For Gold, this is good for you. I did this, it's all done, it's ready to go. That's, yeah, it's got a picture of you, or in this case, I use like a Canva gif, it's like a high five, like you did it. And, and it says, you know, go check your email right now, add my email address to your contacts so you don't miss anything from me. And come back here and contact me if you can't find it. That's it, right? Pretty, pretty, pretty simple. Worrying, right? I am going kind of fast today. I, and I had coffee. I did go to the gym. Surprised they have the energy, I don't know. If you guys have questions, please ask, because we are here, we're here to help. If you guys would like to see, I don't know, maybe would, would anybody like to see a walkthrough of the new Go For Gold funnel? Do you want to see what the new funnel looks like? That would be kind of cool. I'd have to find it. Yes, yes, oh yes, look at all those hands. Okay, we can do that. Alright, let me find it real quick. Alright, if we have any questions, please do go ahead and ask them if you need help with your site. We can walk through this together as well. We've got some time today to do that. And definitely go ahead and add those in while I'm finding this thing to show you. Got to log into another account to get it. Alright, I think, I think I found it. Okay, alright, so this funnel is super simple and super fun. Look at that. If you're in Go For Gold, you already know the, are you crunchy? And that whole thing, the content of it really isn't different, it's just formatted a little bit differently. Your landing page is now a custom page. And by the way, for those of you who don't know, Attract Well is the same as Get Oiling. And if you have Get Oiling, you don't need Attract Well. Get Oiling was created by and for young living distributors. Attract Well is something that we have created as sort of a carbon copy without the special YL stuff. So it's like, like a carbon copy of how Get Oiling works, but it's for people who don't have young living businesses. So Attract Well and the new Go For Gold is made available to all. But you still have your special resources with Get Oiling. So this is what it looks like. So we opt in to get the guide. This is all done for you, all done, ready to go, out of the box. You don't have to change anything. All done, ready to go out of the box. You don't have to change anything, but of course you should. You should make it your own. We click to get the guide. And we should go to, yep, there we go. We go to a thank you page. All of the templates, everything that you see is included for your good oiling system, including my Canva templates for getting this stuff. Now, do you see here? This is what a thank you page looks like, just to kind of reiterate here. One more thing before you go, stuff that I sent you, it's on the way. Add my email address to your contacts so you don't miss what else I'm sending you. And if you don't see the email, get in touch. Pretty cool, right? It's all plugged up and ready to go. Now, once that arrives, I get an email. And it's going to be a minute for it to actually arrive here with me, but it's going to link us over to a Canva PDF that I created. And actually, I think if I can just go over here, I can find that real quick. And show you guys what it looks like that delivers an email. I think no, it's not in this one. It's going to be in the email. Anyway, I'll show you that as soon as it arrives in my email inbox. This looks a little different, right? It's pretty cool. And of course, you can import a, yes, thank you, Julie. Getting port a Canva PD, you can import a PDF through the Canva button as well. If if you already have one made, you can do that, too. You just have to go to your files in Canva and like find the design. And it needs to be the same size as the design that you want. So like use a flyer. And then we can do it that way. Here we go. All right. So I just got the email. It says, hey, congrats on taking your first step toward living a more balanced and fulfilling life. And it's given me the guide. So let me go show you what you get. And this is you get the Canva version of this. So you can edit it to your liking. And you get this, this version that's already done. You could also just use as is if you wanted to. And you can brand it to you. You could do your whole thing. Totally, totally up to you. But this, the first time we did this, we used a custom page for it. Now we're using Canva. There you go. And then there are several emails that follow. Those will nurture toward that person getting in contact with you. Of course, you know, when we're creating these things, we're just creating a way for people to interact with us passively. Because not everybody wants to hop on a one on one conversation about their health and wellness today, right? Like sometimes I just kind of want to see more of what you do before they decide they want to have that conversation. That's the whole point of having a funnel. So all right, cool. So if you guys have any questions, we're here to work with you on those before we get going. Good question, Julie. The name of your Facebook group, should it be the same name or something totally different? If you want to clarify real quick, different from what here in the Q and A? In terms of your Facebook group, it really just needs to be tied to like the the purpose of the Facebook group. If we get too clever with the way we name things, whether it's our website or branding, our, you know, our groups, our social stuff, our funnels, if it doesn't say what it is and what it does, people aren't going to get it. Right? Like you're really tied into the creativity and the interest and everything in what you do. Most other people are so far removed from that that we can confuse them really quickly, right? So clear over clever is always going to be the way to go when you're naming things, when you're sharing information. Always err on the side of clear, because that's what's going to help people know that they need to take a next step. Right? So that's the short answer. If you want to, okay, broad name. So I think I can hone in on it. Yeah. So I would, it really depends, like not knowing what it is. You know, I would definitely hone in on what they get from it, right? What does it do for them? You know, is it is it 10 pounds in 30 days? Is it, you know, it's got to be specific, right? These are recovering procrastinators taking on the world, right? Like, I want that group. Do you want that group? Bring it to me. So so really think about who your person is, what they want. That's what your group should should be about, was deliver for them. If we go, you can get a little too fuzzy, right? Like, you know, living naturally, there's a bajillion groups that are called living naturally. Who wants to live naturally? Who's the person, right? Are these bikers living naturally? And I mean, the vroom vroom kind, like, are they crunchy bikers? You know, like, are they, you know, are they dog parents living naturally? Or is it people who want to live naturally but aren't into the hippie stuff? Like, think about your person, make it about them. And if we get, if we're super fuzzy, nobody's going to see what's in it for them. But if we're too clever about it, they're also not going to see what's in it for them. So just, you know, air on the side of if you were speaking to somebody who has no background in what you do, don't know, they don't know anything about your business. And you could say, I have a group that does this. You're going to be pretty close to the name of the group and whatever that to a stranger response would be. Okay. Angela says, I upgraded my subscription last week to premium. I've not received an email. No, Angela, we have not sent out emails for the for the intensive yet. We will be sending those out here in the next couple of weeks. That's going to go live in August. I'm very excited for you to join us. And welcome to premium. Definitely keep an eye out for that. Okay, Juliette, should we have a thank you or confirmation page on any freebies that we are sending them? Or will that be too much? So I think for anything that you are asking for an email in exchange for some freebie that you're giving away, a confirmation page is the way to go. Absolutely. Because again, like the whole point of giving away a freebie is to collect a contact, right? To collect an email address, to collect a lead. And if we don't have a way to make sure that that person is actually a lead with their correct contact information, then we've done all of this work for, in some cases, potentially nothing, right? So it's it's never overkill. And you can use the same thank you page for everything. You don't have to have a different thank you page for every single thing. That one that I showed you with Go for Gold is just like the, yeah, you did it. Email me if you can't find it, you know, here, add me to your email list. Like, that's it. Keep it simple and you can use it the same for for all of your pages. All right, living life with intention. Yeah, I would like, who who is living life with intention? What do you get from living life with intention? Are you living life with intention? So you can change the world? Or can we be a little more specific than that? Are these moms living with intention to change the world? Or these recovering procrastinators living with intention to change the world, right? Okay, yes, excited to have you. No, it's definitely not in July. I have to breathe. It's been, it's been kind of wild. No, we usually do the personal branding intensive in August. So we're really kind of gearing up for like the the big push back to school. Like, that's a big growth season for young living. And so we're really kind of getting you focused. It's not just about your personal brand. It is very much about how your brand works and the work that you do as a brand, namely your content and how you do it, and your copywriting, your words, they matter. That's that's what we're really focusing in on. So getting into the right activity and the positioning so that you can sail with your brand into great big growth season. Awesome. I read your mind. Are you a recovering procrastinator, too? I'm still working on it. I'm always working on it, aren't we? All right. Great, great feedback here today. I'm so excited that you guys came out and shared your time with us. For those of you who don't know, how are you going to come and join me and listen to Jackie McLaughlin talk about how she runs a platinum business this afternoon? All right. So for those of you who don't know, and you really should be there, I'm going to type this in and like show this on a slide for you guys real quick. Because you want to go. Okay, hold on just a second. Platinum business system. This is something that we announced, we're giving away access to this. It's free. It's totally free. It's at 1:30 PM today. So coming up very soon. Jackie is a platinum leader in young living. She's been with young living for 19 years. She's been an entrepreneur for 40. This woman knows a thing or two about doing the right things to keep things moving. She is a very straight to the point, red person, but is also the most caring person. If you like, she is like the embodiment of tough love. Y'all are going to love her. She knows how to grow this business in a way that keeps people around for decades, right? Don't you want a residual business that that continues to grow for decades? Jackie knows how to get this stuff done, and we have a four part training series you can get for free. This is something that anyone is welcome to join. We do talk about how she uses Get Oiling, because that's actually a really big piece of how she was able to take something that took a whole lot of time and was sometimes kind of stressful and hard to keep up with and turned it into something that she could actually duplicate. She's duplicating, teaching her team to work smart in their business. And they've got really awesome resources that they're sharing together and growing together. And over the next few weeks, you're going to learn what those are and get access to some of those inside Get Oiling resource bundles that she has. So today, we're giving away a couple of her saved reply bundles that she uses. When she's communicating today, we're talking specifically about about the people who are your potential or your future members. So sign up here. And we'll see you shortly on that call with Jackie. All right. So guys, thank you again. Okay, are we still here? Okay. Thank you again for being here. It looks like we had a few others to chat, not the Q and A. It's McLaughlin. Yes, it is jackymclaughlin.com/ platinum-business-systems. Long. I didn't make a pretty link for this. We have been sharing this from inside the back office. So here, I'm going to put it in our chat here real quick. For those of you who are still here, and I'll put the link below our YouTube channel. Breathe in peace and calming. They have such good advice. Okay, that is jackymclaughlin.com/ platinum-business-systems. Okay, that is now in our chat. There you go. All right. We look forward to seeing you on that call. We will be there shortly and we'll see you guys back here next week. Make sure you sign up for a website review or just a one on one. Doesn't have to have a website attached to it and come back here next week, bring a friend, and let's get work done. Thanks you guys for being here. See you next time.
See you guys.